Our invitation today was made by trustee Colley, the president of my trustee Pierce, and Texas Board of Association.
Hello, we're delighted that you allow us to appear here today. Let everything that we do honor you, we do honor your love. The thoughts that we have, the plans that we do, we ask that you take them, that we follow. But with the same goal of doing the tasks for our students, our staff, and our administration. But we always want to give you every holiday choice, but only if we follow you can we get it. Bless everyone, every family represented here. Those always think you are very nice, we love you, Lord, and most importantly, we love us. We use lessons we ask and receive from your study.
I'm going to pledge the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, undroped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Texas Board.
Honored by the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, undroped, one individual.
We have a forum project today, and the meeting is being recorded, and members of the public may address this meeting in progress through simple questions. Our agenda is an opportunity for the public to stress addition of topics for discussion, or to address topics of interest. If there's a debate within three minutes, is anyone personally aggressive, Lord? Say no, or we'll have them free, which is the chancellor's update.
And I have nothing to report, sir.
Nothing to report, except that as a positive.
Yes, sir.
Our number four is Councilman Michael Boyd, and he contacted me and said he cannot be here today, so we'll bring him by him to the workshop next month. And our number five is a disterment in A D and D insurance, Mr. Jordan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, well, I am here to discuss the continuing the life insurance that the college has been providing since nineteen seventy in its life insurance for employees and then also for a slight group of retirees. We have two hundred and fifty-five retirees and twenty-four individuals that would be eligible for the retirement insurance. We went, our current contract is with New York Life, or Cigna, they changed their name. We went out to bid and received three responses to continue the life insurance. And we asked for a number of different options, because this is the plan that is continuing to increase. I mean, over the years, incentives have been spread, so we thought, okay, let's get creative. We'll see what other options we have. We actually met with the retiree association, and they had some ideas, so we included that in our RFP. We received three, limited to three responses, and they were evaluated and were recommended that we continue the life insurance with New York Life. The employee coverage was included in the re-along package where employees with the life, the insurance maximum amount is a hundred and fifty thousand for the life insurance, two times the employee's salary for A D and D up to two hundred thousand. And the employee coverage is not very expensive. The expensive piece of this coverage is for the retirees, and as I mentioned, we have currently a two hundred and fifty-five. That coverage is one times the retiree's annual salary, up to a hundred thousand. And that is, that's where the amount has increased significantly. We're recommending that we continue that same hundred thousand maximum benefit amount with a H seventy reduction schedule. The total you could see in your package will be less than two hundred thousand. The last, or actually, this year, we estimated that the cost would be four hundred thousand. So we're very, very pleased that we met with the retiree association, got some ideas, and one of those ideas was to go with the H seventy reduction schedule.
I would be very much interested in presentation, because when people retire now, are they eligible?
No, they, the twenty-four that we have left that would be eligible for the coverage had to be hired by August thirty-first, nineteen ninety-three. So, even like myself, I don't get that very much. We have some people who are not. So, anyway, next week, we'll be recommending that we continue this insurance.
Questions, Ms. Jordan? Thank you for the consideration, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
It's a good thing for each and every retiree, foreign employees, and said, we're not dead yet, so they've got some good ideas.
I mean, proof positive that it takes, you know, I agree, because they have some good ideas, and they definitely helped us with this process.
I have to say, she did yeoman's work. We, she was, we're looking at five hundred thousand dollars for this policy, and so, speaking of the retirees, the age reduction schedule made a huge difference, as you saw, and they agreed, so, you know, that's, we did, she did well.
And the retirees, and I failed to mention, I don't know if they have some insight, but a couple of the companies that responded wouldn't even bid on a, even H seventy reduction schedule. They said the norm now is H sixty-five, and that's where you start introducing yourself. We had previously a higher reduction schedule, so now we're maybe a little bit better than before, even with this, that we're recommending today.
Oh, sure, thanks, you too, to hear what. Our number six on our agenda is the construction manager risk, C N A R, campus buildings renovation project.
Yes, good afternoon. We had issued a request for proposal twenty-two dash zero one nine. If you remember, this is actually the second time that we issued it. The first time was sometime around late January or February, and unfortunately, we did not get any responses for that RFP that we had issued. Just going around, we actually had four bids that were received from vendors. You can see the four there, all actually fairly local to this area, so we were really excited about that. I gave a little bit of information again about the construction manager risk delivery method process that we were going to be following, and then I had a little note there that on January the twenty-second, the board did approve the construction manager risk methodology for construction procurement. We had a panel of six individuals, just like we do for each of the RFPs, for each construction projects. So we had six individuals that participated on the evaluation committee. I won't go over each of the various factors there, but everything has a percentage weight to it. And at the end of the day, based on that evaluation, Ron and Butler from Neander, Texas, was selected as the best value measure. So we will be bringing forward a recommendation for the approval to award Ron Butler construction, the contract for the construction manager risk services next season.
Is this a company, is this a new team, or is this a company that you've mentioned?
I did not know, it is not a company that we have used before. I, based upon the four companies, Ron and Butler happen to be the most experienced at construction, building, and project, H C S, they're out of Waco, they do not have a lot of experience with actually in the area that they're starting to move into. Joel's Flooring, Arcade Pass, had very little experience in that area as well, although we were really excited to see that they were willing to go ahead and participate in this particular project. So, Ron Butler actually was the most experienced firm, but we have never used them.
Any other questions, Mr. Jordan? Our number seven is on multi-engine aircraft, way ahead, update.
Good afternoon, Chairman Wafer, Board, and Chancellor Enoff.
Good to see you back in the seat.
Before I start on the three-ten thing, I need to introduce someone, our new chairperson for the aviation science department, Abe Bolino. Have you been there a week yet, eh?
Two weeks.
Two weeks now.
Is it with us, what, ten years?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, this is due to C T C, does that position. Okay, I am the chief flight instructor for the aviation science department, and I'm working at the airport itself, and talk today about the Cessna three-ten multi-engine aircraft, and progressing through it, dealing with the engine overhaul and necessary things to be done with the engine on that. So let's go to the update on the multi-engine program itself, and on the three-ten. So, next slide, please. Okay, the three-ten itself is the aircraft we use for multi-engine flights, which is shown up there, A I R P twenty-two fifty-one. For the actual course itself, it is ten hours in the aircraft, five hours in the simulator, and the price of that course that we charge is forty-eight hundred dollars. It is not in the degree plan, used to be we had sixty-six, sixty-seven hours sometimes in the social degree plan, when they cut it back to sixty, that was one of the courses that was fit out. But we still have the aircraft and trying to maintain the fly. Pretty well, not pretty well, it's almost ninety-nine percent that if our students or anybody is going to progress in the commercial aviation field, that industry, they have to get a multi-engine airplane rating. It's going to require that in order to progress at all. Very few positions that have only single-engine requirements. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, here's the timeline on things that progressed here. The last time the aircraft was flown was in August of twenty-eighteen. And I know that was a came out of my logbook. The aircraft went into annual inspection, actually went into a hundred hour, went into annual inspection officially in October twenty-eighteen. Then, in that timeframe, we got someone looking at it, and it confirmed that we had problems with the right engine then. So we needed to work some work done for that one, it was sent off to get repaired, and then our mechanic resigned. So we spent several months there without a mechanic, and having to use some contract mechanic, or who, the contract mechanic was a very good mechanic, that did the work then. Then we had the COVID closure, which slowed us up for a little while, but it definitely held up the progression of maintenance on the three-ten. And then we finally got a mechanic on duty, and he's busy trying to maintain what I call a few to fifteen now, because I always sort of covet, they have to be maintained, too. And so, we've got one mechanic, we have a part-time mechanic trying to maintain all those aircraft itself. The right engine was sent off, it was returned and repaired, and shortly after that, we also pulled the propellers off of it, sent those off for required service bulletin work to be done on those. It was going to be coming up in the future, it was that whole aircraft down, this is the time to pull those propellers and get that kind of work done. Then they found problems with the manual landing gear axle, so they had to order those, and couldn't do very many races of those, they probably were their reasons on it. Then in February twenty-twenty-two, the mechanic's jury trying to type up and do some of the annual inspection, found that the left engine requires some overhaul due to corrosion within, with the crankshaft area, and the push-pull rods and stuff of that nature. And that engine was two hundred hours close to what we call a T B O, which is a time-based overhaul that aircraft engines have. So that all compounded together came up to this point. Next slide, please. We need to acquire a new engine for it, and based on overhaul, retrofitted, or ramps, make a new one, mechanic recommend the engine that is going to cost forty-two thousand dollars. And that was, that number I checked this morning was given to us in February. Upon receiving him installing the engine and completing annual inspection, he's got most of the annual inspection on the aircraft done, which requires opening it up, inspecting internal stuff, and he's fully accomplished most of that as he got along here. So that engine is the thing that fully holds us back now. Also, the avionics upgrade that we had hoped to do almost four years ago, and of course, that's been put off now. They say three months, it might take that long and stuff of that nature. Originally back there, they said the foundation could probably fund a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on that. When I went back to look for a quote, I found in some of the radios that we had an original quote, although they would have been brand-new back then, they don't exist anymore. The avionics industry is going as fast as your computer's got so many more computers now. So the latest quote that I got, it was from Cashville, Bayou Temple, they've got a good people working at Avionics Chatter there, was they estimated it would cost one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Makes big avionics changes in it, and tying autopilots and all these different systems themselves within the aircraft itself, to get this particular thing done, and get a first-class multi-engine aircraft to teach. Now, again, let me interject, my philosophy here is that you don't have to spend that much money, but what I've made all the time is just what for your training professionals. And I always said, I didn't want a C T C graduate with the first time he saw some of this equipment be when he's trying to fly a first officer on a aircraft, that maybe we could have helped him out. Okay, next slide, please. This is the numbers that we figure, we could have had, could have had involved at least seven during the grounding period. We didn't know the ground period was going to be four years, that probably would have been a substantial more number. Two, we're trying to complete the course, the two we're talking about, I was thinking, let them finish. I think he's an Air Force pilot now, he came to me and asked for a letter to go in an Air Force review board, officer review board, haven't heard from him, I'd turn him up. And then four on pace to spring to twenty-twenty-three. I think that there's an opportunity for more of those. Also, since it's not in our curriculum now, I'm going to say we should probably offer this course through continued education. The number of people that need multi-engine ratings has gone up drastically. The number of places that have the aircraft provided now is substantially smaller than when we gone down. But that's Jim Reynolds' opinion, thanks, I hear. The latest success story was, and it's good for my ego, one of the guy I took the multi-engine in his instructor rating, he worked as an instructor for us for a couple of years, and he just passed his, we call it the A T P, at Centaur Airport, airline transport pilot rating, which is the highest pilot rating to go, and he's now working as a first officer on base airlines, flying the jets and everything. And he's probably only got his degree out of A and M about two years ago, and that's how fast the industry is going now. They just came out with a thing that said, first officers pay at some of the American subsidiary of small airlines, went from fifty dollars an hour to ninety for the first officers, and the captains drop it to a hundred and forty-six dollars an hour, and they're hurting for people bad. And so our graduates, they make it all the way through, you have a place to go. So that's the success, next slide. And now, any comments, questions you might have, or anything?
I just have a question, sort of off the wall. Is there any way to attract young people into the, an interest in the future of becoming a pilot?
Yes, there is, but it's got to take a little bit of concerted effort, and here's, this is, I'm lying a lot, I think. But this program's been here for, what, fifty-four years, I think, now? And I guarantee you, in the last two years, I've gotten phone calls from mothers that live in Clean, Temple, Georgetown, they say, y'all got an aviation program? So somehow we need to get our face out there more, and let people know, yes, we got an aviation program, and of course, my prejudice opinion, a really good one. And so, the answer, sir, yes, sir, it can be done. Matter of fact, I'm gonna, I was gonna be gone, like, last week, probably go to my own nickel letter, a open conference, and none. I'm planning to go work, try to kind of, and wear this, you know, and just have to have brochures in my hand and stuff like this, and start talks to people up there. They cancel, they're going to do it November, so I'm planning on doing it November, stuff like that. But you got to get your name on the street and everybody.
We've been doing a lot of marketing, we have, Dr. Garrett has a marketing director's position that's been open, I guess, for a few weeks now, maybe a month. And trying to, trying to get somebody in the marketing. We do have, if they don't, what Jim said, there are a couple of things we have. We bought four new airplanes a couple of years ago. The chief pilot for Southwest Airlines is a friend of mine, and probably a friend of Jim's, and he told me a few years ago, he said, you need to get your three-ten up and running, because to go to the industry, what Jim said, you got to have twin-engine time. And about that time, we started having problems with the three-ten, and it went down. Well, about that same time, we got a huge grant, as you remember, from Mr. Jones. And Mr. Jones, the money's there for us to purchase another three-ten, and to get some more aircraft in our fleet, and get the current aircraft we have serviced and up to speed. So with the new director and Jim's help, we're going to be able to do that. So Rick sent his, his son wanted to come here, and found out that we didn't have a, we didn't have twin-engine aircraft time. So he went to Oklahoma State, and then his daughter was going to come up here this year, and same thing, we still didn't have the three-ten up, so she went also. So a lot of students will go where, where that is, because they're trying to get into industry as quick as they can. We just have to, we get these things up to speed, we're going to do some better marketing, we've already started on that, so we'll hope to see some new things come out. That is support.
I was always proud of everything Central Texas College has done, and, but especially the aviation program. Is there, oh, some way that maybe at our monthly meeting, we could have some, just a short input about what we accomplished that month in, in marketing, or maybe?
Well, as Dr. Garrett, we can talk about, we, we brought some things as, as we were doing marketing, and Barbara left us, so that has slowed down and stopped, but as soon as she gets somebody up and running, you will, you will get more of that when we come back.
Jim, politicians have found a way for the flag on the back of the airplane to fly around. There's multiple advertising, maybe to fly around the plane.
We do teach fly.
Well, when we bought the four new aircraft, we made sure we got a C T C logo on that axle. We were able to dictate what kind of a paint job we got, but made sure we got that. You'd probably have to see me in jail if I put low enough for them to see that around here. That would be, we'll do a matter of time, let somebody else say it. Yes, sir. Thanks, you're welcome.
Any other questions, please? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our number eight is open house, closed budget, C T C.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm here, I'm very excited to share with you guys that we are hoping to host our second annual C T C open house. And the plan for Saturday, July twenty-third, from nine AM to twelve noon. And I don't know if you remember last year's event, that it did all the proceeds, so we're kind of making a few changes. We're going to, the plan this year is to centralize it more here in the Anderson Campus Center. We'll host a series of presentations, there are going to be drop-in presentations, so people can go to a fifteen-minute presentation, but then go to a table and talk to the department and play a game and see a demonstration, and so, but it's, again, it's going to be concentrated here in Anderson. We'll have tours available for everybody, we're going to use the lockarts this year for tours. It's a little hot, it's July, so we're going to take them around, so they'll get campus tour, and we'll stop at the residence hall, and Kate Center, and other places. K N C G is going to be doing a live broadcast, there actually will be our D K this time, which we did before. Alumni is going to root your floats again, who are very popular, have hot dogs, and all kinds of things for everybody. Really excited, the foundation is actually going to give away two tuition scholarships this year, so we're very excited about that. The budget for the event, as you guys already said, is seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. And this is, it's inhaled in your, in your package, how, how we're planning on spending it. It covers everything from food, equipment, signage, marketing, lockarts, et cetera. And so, next week, I'll be here to actually ask for that expenditure, to have approval to spend seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars on C T C's second annual conference.
I think, being certain that, is this about three thousand dollars less than we?
Well, actually, last year's was fourteen thousand, so it's also about half. But we, we're very excited about what we're doing, and we think by centralizing it, we're going to be able to pay really close attention to everybody who steps foot and is here, and pay individual attention. We had two hundred and eighty-eight students, and that doesn't include the guests and their parents, everybody else that came to that event, and we registered a hundred and sixty-seven of them. So, but we're very excited, again, we are doing it earlier this year, last year was in August, but we actually in July is better, faculty are more available in July. We have more time after the event to cultivate those people who came to the event and all of that, so that's it.
But I don't have any questions, I just would like to comment how successful it was last year, and how much I enjoyed it, and I'm very, very glad to have a second.
Well, I hope you'll come back again.
Thank you, I'll certainly try and be here.
What was the question that, I think, this week is that we send a flyer to the churches in our community, those that can be distributed.
I will tell you, one of the places that we're cutting some of that is some of the print, or the mail, the hard mail, we are emailing, and in that, yes, that would be good.
I'm just saying, that's your population that you're trying to provide, so that's just.
Church, absolutely.
Thank you, Ed, much for talking to you. Our number nine is our Title IX report.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Councilboard members. Tell them to bring the second reporting period, running from January first, twenty-twenty-two to May third, first, twenty-twenty-two. That requires some Texas Education Code fifty-one point two-three, two-five-three, Charlie. We require every reporting period to bring the Title IX descendants for the campus. Under this reporting here, we have one case that came in, that case is currently awaiting the Title IX hearing, which is scheduled for next month, on the eleventh. No other cases have come, even so far this academic year, we've received four reports. Three of those were investigated, one was returned to, two were returned to K I S D as those individuals were removed from the program. We have one which went through the full process, and that respondent was, received this narrative action, again, we have one case that is pending, some questions.
And so when they, this situation happened, they would set back the campus, or they, they didn't do it.
So, under Title IX, we no longer have here a station, so they were returned back to their own house campuses. So then that turns to that school that is to take where I should.
These were two early college high school students.
What was that, please?
These were two early college high school students. So we worked back to. So we worked back through KISD and, or CCIC, whatever the case is, and they, they return them back to their campus, to where they should have been.
I don't know, ten is the four of them remaining. As you all are aware, the, uh, the Nationalization Act, or as we know, required, uh, any installations, light installations, light installations, air force installations. But had anything with a name tied to, in front of hero, could be removed, uh, four of them was in that category. It dropped out of the Confederate Journal. Uh, those decisions have been made, you probably saw in the newspapers, four of them will be renamed to General Tomassos. Sue was a former Fort Mandariner and retired force captain, and actually had a little ranch up for him and grew, uh, very fast. Very distinguished gentleman, true war hero, and, uh, some of us knew him personally. So I'd like the board to, uh, actually approve, uh, a motion to charge our chancellor, we're coming up with, uh, some alternatives that we could use in renaming our campus. I don't think it'd be appropriate to keep the name Fort Tomassos campus uh, under any changes that have been required. But on the other side of the coin, you don't have to name it Fort Tomassos, too, neither, we can use our initiative, it doesn't have to be appropriate, so. Door's open, and that's the purpose of doing that, is to make sure that we're in the spirit of what needs to be done, so we don't have any population in the future. So are you taking recommendations now? So we don't, that's not only agenda to vote on. I mean, yeah, I know we vote on it next week, but, but what I want, what I want to ask you to do is to authorize the chancellor to create a committee to do some research and provide those recommendations. There's plenty of people here, who's more than we are, and we've got some good, good ideas probably, and, uh, we need to stay and listen to all of them, and treat them right back. We've got some people at CTC that have done well. We possibly could bring one of our own students, or our own faculty, or our own, uh, I'd have to put a first chance, that's why I did call it the X-Luxes. So that's the purpose of that, uh, and then we'll move on to, I don't know, nine, it's a cybersecurity, trusting, testing, training, uh, tomorrow. Should you then?
Um, I'm here for your, 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 some security issues, of your, um, references with this department. Um, this is in cooperation with, uh, HR, our training. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So while we're doing this training, it is mandated by the state of Pences in the Pences Administrative Code. Um, your participation in this training then fulfills that, uh, state requirement. And throughout the brief training, we're gonna provide a question and answer session to gauge your cybersecurity awareness. So we are all responsible for protecting CTC's confidential and information resources. Uh, your partnership is critical in this institutional IT security guide, uh, goal and strategy. And, um, you can find, um, our security, um, initiative under the, um, HR Policies and Procedures Manual in Policy two ninety-four, our IT security policy. So what is confidential information? Confidential information is information that must be protected, but unauthorized disclosure and public release based on federal law and a legal agreement, and that's the Texas Administrative Code two oh one point one. And what we want to, confidential is any personal identifiable information. This includes names, social security numbers, your firm, your mother's maiden name, um, unique biometric data, um, or, um, some students will go out there and use, um, fingerprints and things like that to actually go out there, uh, access for tests, uh, unique electronic identification numbers, addresses, routing codes, or any bank information, uh, telecommunications access devices, uh, so anything that we have stored, um, as far as cards, uh, account numbers, uh, things like that. And this again is gonna be the Texas Code, uh, fifty-two thirty-one. Uh, we also have, uh, sensitive information, um, this is information that can lead to a breach of data systems, protections or controls. Uh, this includes account credentials, um, which are your logins and your passwords, uh, information regarding, um, the structure and configuration of our security, and policies and procedures needed to gain access to our resources. Next slide, please. Uh, intellectual property, uh, certain types of research data, and any other information that we consider private and we don't want the public to actually have access to. So what is acceptable use? Uh, the state of Texas considers information resources valuable and strategic assets. Uh, we want to ensure compliance with ethical, ethical statutes, regulations, and mandates. We want to also establish prudent and acceptable practices regarding the use of information resources. And we want to educate individuals, um, for using those information resources as associated with their CTC duties. And we have a brief video for you to watch.
Or sound. Yeah, but sound is not working.
Basically, this video is to basically do things like protecting yourself, uh, checking five key things, uh, when you're actually going out there to be sure that, uh, your, your privacy is protected, um, checking credit card statements, um, knowing that you have payment due dates, um, that are available, uh, checking, um, health insurance, um, statements, to make sure that they match with the care that you actually get, um, going out there and shredding documents that you no longer need, and reviewing your free credit reports at least once a year, just to make sure that everything is good with those. So CTC does have a privacy policy, and then we do have a web privacy policy on the homepage, down at the bottom, uh, for students and staff to go out there and review that. Um, but we do also want to understand, uh, our security risk. Uh, with our privacy policy, we want to make sure that information resources, um, are, um, secure. And it's kind of a, uh, given that you, uh, staff and students have no expectation of, um, privacy with respect to information resources here at CTC. So understanding our security risk, um, any software that is installed or copied on information resources must be legally licensed and managed. So the following are general categories of prohibited software on CTC devices. Hacking tools, uh, password scramblers, network sniffers, uh, port scramblers, um, software that throws, um, throws out their proxies or mimics, um, the authority of another user for the purpose of gaining access to our systems. Uh, software that will go out there and instruct or enable users to participate in any activity considered a threat to local, state, or national security. And possible impacts include reputational damages, uh, financial loss, um, interruption of critical services, uh, compliance fines and sanctions by regulatory agencies. And security, IT, uh, security engineer does have a list of, uh, prohibited software and may add to those as that comes up. Authorized software is any software that is installed on a CTC-owned device and is licensed through the IT or your department. Uh, if it's not, it could be in violation of copyright laws in CTC policy and must be reserved immediately. Uh, most of your software requires an acceptable, um, use license, uh, fine, uh, or agreement uh, with the software vendor at the time of installation. Uh, a lot of your personal or free software that you can actually get online do not include software licenses. And a lot of these are not going to be licensed to be used on, um, actual business-type environments. Next slide, please. So the software license purchases and related, uh, contract documents are approved and authorized by IT, and in some cases, software packages are licensed at the college level, which is system level, um, that includes things like Oracle or Lucian, um, or software shared among CTC institutions. Uh, other software packages are gonna be licensed at the institutional or, um, CTC level. Um, that could be things like Adobe three sixty-five, uh, obviously Office three sixty-five, Adobe or Symantec. And some of these, uh, software packages may be licensed by the department. So the following are going to be prohibited software. And again, um, the hacking tools, password scramblers, um, software that mimics, um, other software for the user to gain access to your systems illegally. Um, and software that instructs or enables the user to participate in, uh, activities considered a threat. And again, that's our, our software, um, CTC security engineer does have a list of all that software, pretty. Next slide. So we do have business, uh, and research partners that will sometimes have to go out there and access, uh, our CTC's, uh, security systems. Um, and if these, uh, business partners do access, um, they are going to have to abide by, um, our policies also. But they also must, um, have a legitimate educational or business purpose for accessing, uh, comply with all CTC policies, including the IT security policy, which is two ninety-four, provide a government-issued identification card, and only access the data for their business purpose. So what we wanna do is we wanna stay safe online and not be a victim. Some types of attacks, um, that can target us here at CTC include phishing, spear phishing, phishing, smishing, and farming. Oh, phishing, this is basically going to be any type of attack, uh, specifically an email designed to trick you into giving away your personal information. So those emails that you get from banks, things like that, with a link to click here because your information has been compromised, you don't wanna click on those. And if you responded to one of those emails and provided any type of information to them, you wanna get a contact with the IT help desk, um, you can email them or call them at, uh, two five four five oh one thirty-one oh three, and, um, it can offer additional assistance to you. Uh, if you do receive one of those emails, um, just go ahead and delete that, no further action is needed. There'll be a clip to open those, so I'll put some of the links here. If you're not sure about that, then again, contact the IT help desk. Spear phishing is, uh, targeted phishing, but it's going to target specific groups or individuals. So criminals are actually gonna go out there, do research, find out their target audience. Um, they may personally tell brands or organizations, um, and it's pretty sophisticated. Um, you've probably seen, um, targeted email from, um, the, uh, people that wanna go out there and buy back books here at CTC, um, people that wanna go out there, provide specific training, things like that. And there are usually always some type of link out there that you can click on to go out there and purchase something, or get something for free. Uh, a lot of times they can introduce viruses and other things like that into our system. And so the comparison between the two is that both are going to come out and come to you through email. Um, phishing normally is probably gonna be institutional-wise, so a lot of people will get that email versus the spear phishing, where it'll be targeted to just a few groups or maybe individuals. And both of them are basically gonna go out there and be targeted at, and won't be their information, personal information. Next slide, please. So to stay vigilant when information's done through email, um, don't put any links in your email unless you've sort of have a similar identity and expected information. Um, don't open any attachments if you do open that email. Um, and don't send out any personal information. Um, delete any or do not provide suspicious or suspect emails. Um, make sure that you update desktop, laptops, and mobile device any software. Um, keep current on all of your critical updates. And don't turn your CTC computer off when you're on campus. Um, we do, um, usually at night, um, weekends, um, send out critical updates to the computer, so if the computer's not turned on, then it's not going to receive that update. And if you go to the, uh, CTC page and go to info technology, um, we do have a link called IT Security, and there are tips and other information that are available to you on security. So beyond, uh, phishing and spear phishing, there is phishing. That uses your phone or your voicemail services to contact you to obtain, uh, personal information. Um, you may have received, um, calls about some vehicle warranties, um, owing the IRS back taxes. I think you're really binging right now, is there a lot of people that wanna buy their phones? So, um, that is phishing versus phishing, which are, um, using text messages for the same reason. Um, and again, to get personal information. Um, I've noticed a couple of text messages that just come up on the blue, and they just say, "How are you doing?" You know, kind of makes it a little personal, and you kind of almost wanna go back and say, "I'm doing great", but before you actually look and see that it's from somebody that's not even contacted us. Uh, farming, uh, or internet browsing, and exploring the user business website and automatically installs a malicious code, usually unknowing to yourself that you've done that. Uh, once the device has been compromised, the attackers have a multitude of ta- uh, tactics to go out there, collect your personal information, and launch, uh, other criminal activities. Uh, farming websites could be pretty sophisticated and difficult to detect. Uh, for instance, here, uh, you may go out there and think that you're accessing Google, but if you do look at the webex, uh, address up, up top, it is another website, it's not actually Google. So same practices, um, again, just be careful about visiting websites without knowing the author or publisher. Um, be vigilant from checking the URL with web access, or address. Updating desktop, um, laptop, and other mobile devices for virus software, for antivirus software. Update your desktop, laptop and other mobile devices for virus software, the antivirus software. And keep current on your critical system updates. Also, if you're working with your email, I know a lot of times you get email. And if you might not be sure who it's from, you can actually click on the link for the email address. And see if it actually is from Google versus somebody's personal name that's up there in that whole web address area up there. So you can also check that way. So that brings us to our very first question. Which of the following is suspicious email? All of the above. Great, we should get our answer. Next slide please. And so again, suspicious email, here are some of your hints. Do not click on the links unless you've opened a thumb. If you do open an email, do not give out personal information. And if you do have any type of problems, any questions, contact the IT help desk. Next slide please. Which of the following may be used to steal personal or non-public institutional information? All of the above. Next slide please. And so where do our security threats come from? It could be nation states, it could be hackers, terrorist groups, unhappy insiders. Next slide please. So criminals and their intentions. Basically, they are motivated by money and profit. Revenge, retaliation, political gain. Special cause activism, which we call activism hate. National security, whether it's domestic or international. Just for fun or excitement. So procedures for reporting this include contacting the IT help desk. And this is to be unstated in CTC security policy 294. If you do have any problems with hacking or any other things, contact the IT help desk. Make them aware of any type of security issue that you might have. You can email them at help desk, that's ctcv.edu. Or 254-501-3103 to give them a call. This also includes potential criminal acts, which include data theft, fraud, et cetera. And then usually what they will do is go ahead and contact the appropriate authorities too. But if you can't, please just check that a little bit further on. So we can have an internet use policy also. And so if you are using the internet, we have appropriate use that employees should follow. So be sure that files downloaded from the internet are scanned for malware and approved by the approved malware detection software. Websites and applications must comply with the CTC computer use policy, which is policy 295. All user activity about CTC information resource assets is subject to logging and review. And all of the CTC IT services accessed via the internet, hosted locally or elsewhere with CTC IT approval must comply with the computer usage policy. So make sure that when you're using the internet, that you are not using it to have a using it for personal gain, commercial gain or political purposes. No CTC confidential or sensitive data should be made public. All confidential CTC material transmitted over the internal network should be restricted. Electronic files must be retained and destroyed in accordance with state mandates. And incidental use must not result in a direct cost to CTC or interfere with normal performance of an employee's work. So Windows, Windows 5.0, Chief Security Officer for Fastlets, at one single vulnerability is all it an attacker needs to actually go out there and cause havoc to the system. So not only do we have computers and laptops, tablets and phones that pose a threat to our security. Also multi-functional devices. This includes scanners, printers, fax technology. Because we are sending over an actual network, so those can pose a threat also. So if you are using these types of devices, make sure that you set strong administrative and user passwords to access the unit. And I believe all of our units have some type of code, usually department code, in order to actually use those devices. Restrict physical access. And so make sure that that device is not where you have a long traffic back and forth. Ensure that logging is enabled and monitored so that we know, you know, maybe how many copies are coming out. Who was, you know, going out there using that device. Limit access to functions based on job function duty. Integrate access with CTC accounts where feasible. Set up the unit so that images and documents are immediately deleted after a program processes. So person behind you cannot go back and actually get a copy, but you just print it. Apply the latest vendors, apply upgrades to correct vulnerabilities as appropriate. So our next question. Which of the following is sidewalk criminals used? Let me back up a little bit. Used in access to confidential information. Next slide please. And again, just be aware that your multi-functional devices can pose a threat to security also. Next slide please. One more question. Personal laptops, mobile devices and desktops that connect to the CTC network are subject to the CTC College IT monitoring, security and management standards.
True.
Next slide please. It is acceptable to share passwords of IT staff and other trusted individuals. No, that's false. And our IT help desk, any other IT staff will never ask you for your login credentials. So for mobile computing, which includes your phone, laptops, tablets. Make sure that you have PINs, pass codes and biometric access enabled on those devices. Maintain up-to-date software, including operating systems and applications. Disable features that are currently not in use, such as your Bluetooth, your infrared or your Wi-Fi. Set Bluetooth enabled devices to not discoverable so that unauthorized devices cannot detect them. Avoid joining unknown Wi-Fi networks. And don't install apps that you don't need and offload or delete unused apps. Delete all information stored on your device prior to disarming it. But basically to a hard reset. Do not leave your mobile device unattended. Back up, we have another.
You got no sound on it.
No sound, okay, so we'll go on then. Next slide please. So privacy policies again are used to establish limits, expectations for users at CTC or our information resources. Internal users have no expectation of privacy with respect to information resources. So our next question is mobile computing devices are generally not secure and at risk for data loss. As such, Central Texas College's blank information should not be stored on mobile computing devices. And so again, maybe make sure that you do not store any of this information on any type of mobile devices. You know, it's really easy to kind of leak these devices, you know, running around or somebody can actually come and pick those up and some of them. Next slide please. Email in my inbox and files that I have created and stored on CTC, all provided information and resources is my personal property. That is false. And so again, anything that is created or stored or that you do on CTC devices belongs to CTC. Next slide please. It is the responsibility of Central Texas College to safeguard students' personal information. And as employees of Central Texas College, I share this responsibility.
True.
Next slide please. So types of, more types of threats. And this is types of malware, which include viruses, spyware, Trojan horses, ransomware. There are a number of computer security incidences in the past few years. And they're increasing, resulting in the cost of business disruption, service restoration, continue to escalate. Implementing comprehensive security policies, blocking unnecessary access to network computers. Improving user security awareness and early detection and mitigation of security incidences are some of the actions that reduce the risk and drive down costs of security incidents. So a virus is capable of replicating and spreading to other computers by attaching itself to messages and programs. When a recipient opens the message and launches a program. Trojan horse is a type of malware that infects your computer by misleading you about the purpose of the application. A lot of times you think it's a legitimate application, but it is not. Keyloggers are applications that can infect your computer, that will go out there and record your keystrokes. Specifically, your login credentials. Adware is malware disguised as advertising and used to generate revenue by an advertiser. Many scam artists will use pop-ups on websites. And I think we've all followed on to a website and they have all these little pop-ups all over the place. And so the best thing is just to kind of back out of there. Ransomware is a form of malware that limits you from accessing your files and information until ransom is paid to remove the restrictions. And a lot of times, once that ransom is paid, the restriction still remains. So some of the warning signs that you may have been infected with one of these. Increased pop-up messages, sudden occurrences of items on your toolbar. Slow or freezing computer when it wasn't before. Suddenly hard drive storage. A lot of times these programs will go out there and take up a lot of storage. Applications opening without your action. Emails instant from your account without you doing it. Certain files on your device not opening. And any virus software that is disabled. And hard drive activity when your computer is idle. And so what we want to do is we actually want to go out there and practice cyber hacking. And this was a video, I was hoping we could see this one. But this one actually had a guy that went and actually did the latest issue because office mate said, see it, Game of Dragons, I think it was. And so he actually went out there and put out an email that said, get it for free. And it was actually ransomware, wanted him to pay a thousand dollars in Bitcoin in order to continue on. And to get all of his files back. So, once he did that, and he went to his office mates and they had already seen three more episodes. So I don't think he wanted to pay another three thousand dollars to see all the other episodes. But again, just be aware of those threats are out there. Next slide please. So a virus is a software app or an application that securely manages your data. That's false. And which of the following may be sign as your access is infected with malware? All of the above. And so our data management cycle is always continuous. You're always going to be collecting data from our students, classifying the data, storing and retaining that. And then what is a lot of repeated deleting and archiving that. So that just is a continuous cycle. So we do have procedures here to actually get it to dispose of our unneeded records. Our retention and our backup. And so some of these include for data retention, establishing a system to organize our files. To send them, to receive them and to store them. Delete old and unwanted files when they're not required to be retained anymore. Be sure to check any deleted items, sent items and any of our deleted or junk holders. And archive old files that we need to retain. And protect against ransomware attacks, ensure that, you know, multiple backup copies, including some on off-site storage. So some of our options include OneDrive for Business, which is a secure document storage with Office 365 that comes included. Not endorsed, but allowed here at CTC. Google Drive or Docs, again, a lot of yours, but allowed. Some of the issues there are that a lot of times an individual will set up those accounts. And so if that individual happens to leave CTC, the next person needs to go out there and access. SharePoint, online multipurpose, Red platform. And we have several departments that are using SharePoint. Jabber. And this is our platform for communication, to chat with other employees here at CTC. Blackboard, learning management system. And wiki user managed websites that allow users to create and edit Red content. And although internal cloud storage is not discouraged, it's not placed to store anything important or sensitive. So we do have a shared drive here at CTC that would be contacted by IT. And do you have a second backup storage or do you have a shared drive that you can use to as a second home backup? So the backup, best practices. Ensure that you have multiple backup copies, including some that are stored off-site or off the network. Refresh entire backups periodically. Full backups at least once a week or often, based on how critical it is of your data. Daily backups for data that changes daily, which are incremental or differential backups. And permission critical hosted services, keep a local copy updated periodically in that's an extra, as an extra precaution. So for equipment disposal. Make sure that in that technology exchanges between CTC departments. Make sure that you're following any guidelines that we have for backing up our software, any data that we have. Individuals must be authorized in their department to post and review listed computing equipment. So if you do need to dispose of any laptops or any phones, any tablets, things like that. Be sure that you're authorized to do that. be sure that you're authorized to do that. Equipment transfer paperwork needs to be completed so that you can know where those devices are and actually check those devices. And as any equipment transfers, CTC operating policies and procedures apply, please visit the IT help desk policies and SOP website, which is on the information technology website for equipment return policies. And when the equipment finally leaves the institution, it must be done through IT in adherence with State of Texas Department. And so each department should review records firsthand for retention schedules for any records that they have. It's all paper documents, and it shouldn't, whether they should be retained or destroyed. Once the record's retention time has expired or no longer even, the record should be disposable in the appropriate manner. Records with no personal confidential information can be recycled or thrown away. But those that have any personal information on them, those should be shredded or any of appropriate deletion for those records. Next slide please. So we want you to stop there and connect. And this was a legal video with different people just kind of out there, you know, who might be using computers or any type of technology. But what we want to do is we want you to kind of stop there and connect to make sure that we're using our devices appropriately. And make sure that you do your part to fight cybercrime. Yeah, thank you for attending. And it takes every employee to kind of make sure that we keep our network and on our resources, IT resources safe. Please take due lessons with a file every day. If you have any questions, either send an email or in the questions that I'll have asked, or contact the IT help desk.
I don't have a question, but I sure do appreciate your training us and and thorough and well-informed. So thank you.
Do you have a question?
We go through my corporation, I'm a franchise member of. We get hit with phishing, and we learn, I learned about smishing about a month ago. Like what kind of, yeah, you explain exactly how they explain it to us. And you need compromise like that. And now it all takes that one little crack and everybody's affected.
And everyone's saying to me that we all agree that this is, I see, you know, we didn't just fall asleep, or really want to hear what we need to hear. I can't think of a person that could have spoken as politely about him at a level that everyone could understand what you had today. So thank you for being here for this, perhaps. Even though we don't want to hear, we don't want to hear. You made it, you made it tolerable.
They liked it Angela.
You did a great job.
Those in the audience had seen this twice.
Sometimes this does get your hackers out there. Sure, you all get these spam calls, I have no idea. I got one that was in Roscoe, Texas. You know, Roscoe is. And I don't want to answer this. And this guy said, I had to talk to you about your car insurance. And I said, great, I wanted insured. He said, what time for you guys? I said, 1937 Lincoln Jumper. And he said, what, what car do you drive? I said, a 1937 Lincoln Jumper. They give you some insurance quotes on it. It was totally silent up there. Next slide please. So sometimes you can play it back on.
I, I've got, oh, he said Roscoe, Texas?
Yeah.
I had a roommate in college that was Roscoe.
Last time one agenda number, the evidence, the written topics, what did it did hours or that? So what do you?
Oh, thank you.
I don't have any.
I'd like somebody to come back and tell us when the restart is actually in the air.
Your orientation flight?
I know how to get there.
I don't remember 13, it's now scheduled to regular morning scheduled for Tuesday, June 28th, 2022 at 1:00 p.m. And the workshop scheduled for Tuesday, July 8th, 2022 at 1:00 p.m. But we do now have an executive session today. That's the stand in general.